Okay, welcome everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. Anyone stand for the pledge? Thank you. I'm just gonna read the mission statement. The mission of this Chatham Central School District is to provide students an education that nurtures intellectual curiosity and focuses on academic and cultural foundations. Our students will graduate with knowledge, problem-solving abilities, and character needed to participate ethically, adapt, succeed, and contribute to their future educational career and community endeavors. Approval of the present agenda. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we'll have public comment if anyone would like to comment. No? Now we can do the enrollment study. Andrew, do you want to do an introduction?
Yeah, so before I start that, I just want to let everyone know Mike Chuddy's gonna be running a little bit late today. I was invited to go to the county the county safety committee through the county because they are looking and exploring, which we're really hoping this happens, to put cameras on the outside of all of our buses in Columbia County for every single school district. So there was a meeting today that I was invited to to go and we would be representing the district, so I asked Mike to go there. So I don't know if you're aware, but other counties, all their school buses have cameras on the outside of them. You know, the stop sign when people are passing, so it would actually record them. And then there's a then there's a group that then would send tickets. Right now, we're having to manage that ourselves, and when there's an issue, we have to call the authorities. It's very challenging, and if it's not on camera or not seen on camera, it's very hard for us to push any charges. So they are, our county is looking into that, and they invited all the superintendents. But being that I had a board meeting, I asked Mike to go instead. So Mike should be coming in late, so I just wanted to let you all know. Okay? Alright, so we are here to talk about enrollment. So an important piece of planning for our future is for the district to get a good understanding of the enrollment and projections in our calculations. To welcome Paul Saversky from the SES Study Team, who conducted the enrollment report and will be presenting tonight. This is a tool that will help the community plan and discuss our future. This tool will be used throughout our process as we start to develop a plan for the future of Chatham, using the stakeholder groups and also community feedback. So this is just one data point that we're gathering. It's a very important data point. And I asked Paul to come and present it to all of you. So he's not going to go through the entire report. He's just gonna touch upon pieces of it. And then the board will have an opportunity to ask questions at the end of the report. Alright, so I'm introducing Paul. Thanks for being here, Paul.
Paul, thank you for inviting me. Thank you for allowing me to help you with developing this tool. To turn to the preface, page I. Because people in the community now, they say, why are you wanting to do this? Well, I think page I answers that. In the preface. It's a tool, much like Andy was just talking about. It's a tool to support, and this is important, local people, local knowledge. To support your local people, local knowledge, that you and your community together provide the program vision that you want to serve your young people. And that's something, doesn't that sound like a lot of nice words? But the graph below really shows frankly why board members get paid so much, especially in central schools. Take a look at the balancing you have to do. You've got expenditures that drive your program vision. You, on behalf of the community, make a decision of what is that vision for our kids. The other part of the balance is, well, the revenues to do that. And there is a series of revenues. How do you balance that? One, as Andy said, one of the important things you need to have an idea about is we exist because we serve young, we serve young people. And our communities provide us those young people. Well, what's the future look like for your community with regard to having school-aged children? That's really key. That's our client. I'm gonna be wrong. The community as a whole is a client, but it's those wonderful kids that come to school every day. That's who the clients are. So how many come or don't come is critical to how you go about developing your the implementation of your program vision. Okay? And it's important. Not that the program vision changes, but how you implement it will depend upon how many kids you can have who will be part of delivering that vision. Okay? That's kind of a context of what this is all about. If you turn to page three, these studies frankly are, look at historical patterns, real data of your district. Historically, what has been the K-12 enrollments? So on the bottom of page three, and in other parts of the study, I go back further, but let's look at the past six years. As you can see, in the past six years, you have 10.2% fewer children than you did in 1920. You have 101 fewer children than you did in 1920. 2019, 20. It's just, that's a matter of record. Okay, so what do we do with that? Well, let's, let's dig a little deeper. If you'll turn to page four, we take that same data and divide it into K-6 and 712. This is a bit revealing. Because if you notice, if you would compare your K-6 enrollment in 1920 with 2425, you were down 97 out of those 101 fewer enrollments occurred in your K-6. Think about that. And we'll talk a little bit as we go along, well, what happened? You only had a change of four young people in 7 through 12 comparing 1920 to 2425. So this helps begin focusing in questions and also, hmm, let's look at maybe why? Or, and/or, what can we do in the near and far future to help mitigate that loss of elementary kids? Because it, you realize what happens. Your current K-6 are gonna turn into your 712. So if you have lower sets of K-6 kids, you can pretty well expect your 712s will decline over the next five years unless families move in with older children. I know that sounds dumb, but that's the reality. Unless you have new people move in with that age group, you're likely will have 7212 decline over the next five to six years. But let's dig, let's look at it a little deeper. Page, page four and five. Look at page five is the picture. Kind of interesting. Over the past six years, we already know that in 912, you're only down by seven children, seven young people in all those years. Look at 68. Okay? You had a decline of 20, but your real big decline is in K-5. So the reason we do that instead of K-6, you are organized, K-5, 68, 912. So the data ought to reflect how you live life and how you, and how you develop the program. So again, it emphasizes that the bulk of your loss is in K-5. Now, live births are critical to getting clients, okay? As well as people moving in with kids. But let's look at live births first. So if you look at page 12, what I've done here is plotted for you the pattern of live births over the past six years for the school district. The pattern of live births in what I call catchment area towns. As you well aware, well aware, you serve various towns, but you don't serve all of the towns. So therefore, other schools serve what you don't serve. So looking at it from the district and looking at it a little larger in the towns that you're a part of, and then finally, look at the top, Columbia County. So there's kind of good news here, I think. That the catchment area towns, which you serve part of, the rate of decline, actually, there's a rate of increase, a very small rate of increase over the past six years, if you look at the pattern. I know it says 185 to 183, but really looking at the pattern, the trend line, is a positive trend line. Not by a lot, but I'll take whatever we can get. The district's trend line is minus, which we kind of suspected because you have fewer K-5 kids. However, the trend line for the county as a whole is more negative than the district. So a perspective, so your part of the county is not experiencing what other parts of the county are experiencing with regard to live births. Still minus, but there are factors that are not causing your live births to decline faster or even equal to the rest of the county. Okay? And I, and I, on the bottom of page 12, I just show you the district, so you can see with smaller ranges, so you can see the up and down that occurs. And that's not uncommon.
Paul, can you explain why it only goes to year 22?
Pardon?
Can you explain why it only goes to the year 22 when that data comes out for 22?
Well, here's why. Yeah, I know that sounds all like, gee, Paul, we're in 25. The New York State only publishes, they, they count all the live births by school district based on the information they get from hospitals. So it's very accurate data. Frankly, it takes time. It takes that long to make sure that data we get is accurate. Okay? So in fact, in fact, that's what I do. I'm doing some work now. I contact them like this, for the districts I'm, just engaged me. I call, I, I get ahold of them, I beg them a little bit, please give me data from 2023, which is not totally ready for publication, and I'll put it down that it's, that it's estimated in order to get that year in, but it takes that long. But the compromise is this data is as accurate as you possibly can from an entity. They really, they count each birth of where the parents live and not where the child is born. Okay? So let's take a look at maybe some, let's take a look at some demographic data, starting on page 13 of your school district. This is just Chatham. Taking into account lower enrollment, particularly in the elementary, the live births being a lot, being leveled, being a little minus, well, let's look at your community comparing it over 10 years. This is kind of interesting. I think. Take a look at total population, ages 25 to 34. The kind of good news is that share of your population has actually gone up almost 2%. Now, why is that good news? Well, it's good news because childbearing years are considered up to age 44. So if you have a set of a cohort of population increasing below 44, that can, it doesn't guarantee your children, but it gives you a chance, okay? So look at 35 to 44. That's kind of interesting because that hasn't changed much. So really, any population that's come in actually has been a little bit younger than it was back in 2014, 18. The under 18 population is down. And that's simply because fewer, people are having fewer children. I have no evidence that people have moved out of your district with children because of some problem or whatever. Just normal life. That's what this data is telling me. The 65 years and older, notice, pretty stable. Now, if that was higher in this last five years, I would have more concern for the future enrollments of your district. More and more households you have with those 65 years and older presents not only not having children, more children, but dealing with maybe a different point of view about the role of the school in the community. And that doesn't mean everybody over 65, and includes me, is negative schools. But it's a different set of people that you have to work with. Okay? So it stayed the same. Median age though, look at the median age. I was very happy to share with you, your 25 to 34 age population went up, but notice, you're still well above 44 for the median age. You're 50.1, which is in essence, equal to 50.2 that was in the previous five years. So the median age, half above, half below, is still well above 44. So, let's go to page 14, some other elements that I think are something to consider as you look to the future and about kids coming into the district. No matter where we live, the price of homes in New York, upstate, downstate, middle state, you, it doesn't matter, have gone up. And for all those of us that are homeowners, we get more equity. However, those who wanting to buy and find a house, it's a little difficult. Take a look here. Look, in in 2014, 18, the the value of 11.2% of your houses were, were over $499,000. However, look in the most current data. Over double that, almost 24%. And it's relative, but it's 24% now are in that range. Alright, so you think about, and look at the median value of owner occupied units. The previous five years, it was 238.7, again, median, half above, half below. And now, our, with the latest federal data, which doesn't come out again until December of '25, there's 347. In all likelihood, it's well above that now. When we did this study, I asked Andy and like if you expected any, any residential units being built en masse or large quantities. The answer was no. So we didn't, what we did here, we did a calculation study, we didn't interview realtors and et cetera, call town code people. Because you, there's no need to do that if you, if there's nothing that you even know of that may be of 25, 50, 60 homes. Okay? Onesies are good, but the bigger ones will bring some, could bring some kids in. So you have though, look at that next part, which is kind of an anomaly, but it's good. You have more households with under 18 residents in the past five years than you did in the previous five years. That's good news, but we know that they're not at the elementary age. They're at the secondary age because of, right, we plotted what your enrollment's been. Something to consider. All households with one or more people 65 years and older, you have about almost 2% more homes, households with one or more people 65 years and older. So the number of households with people 65 years and older has increased, even though your, your segment of the population over 65 is stayed about, actually, stayed about the same. Okay? Notice what's happening down below. This kind of looks at residents one year ago. Well, who, who by age group is moving, or where are they coming from? So about three, you had 336 people on average move in over 2019, 23. Okay? 336. But they came from a house in the same county. So it could be the same district or it could be nearby. Alright? However, you had 549, I know that's still a small number, it doesn't matter. We've got to look it through the eyes of Chatham, not Troy or anything else. 549 people came in from a different county. And I'm suspecting it's because over the years, because I'm familiar with your district a little bit as an outsider, that you, how can I say this? People have moved to your district, it's a nice place to live, large pieces of land, nice houses, good place to retire, still close to urban area, but frankly, you can still look out your window in the morning and see a deer cross your lawn. So you have an attractiveness for people to move there from other counties, and this shows it. Alright? The issue is, do they come with children? Don't know the answer exactly, but if you combine that with the other data about the number of people over 65 and the number of households with one or more people over 65, likely not as many as you, one would want. Okay? Again, stop me anytime, ask any question. By the way, this is one of the reasons I always ask the superintendent, to make sure the board, I know it's odd in this age of digital life, that you have a copy of this, and I don't know, you could put it in your t-shirt drawer, whatever. Look at it as time progresses and see if, wow, are these patterns continuing? It really becomes a tool. It's not something you just put in a drawer. Kind of compare and contrast data as you get it, and, you know, new enrollment for like 26 or something, and see what's happening. If we go to now, uh, let's take a look at page 16. Here are your, here's your district kindergarten enrollment for the past, since 2019. Good sign. It's only one year, so you can't bet, you can't bet the house on, or the farm on this. But notice the pattern. You've gone from 62 kids in kindergarten to 66 kids. I know it doesn't sound like much, but it's relative to the district. But you see over the, from 2020 to 2023, and that was the COVID years too. You have fewer kindergarten enrollments compared to 2019, but I'm pleased to say 2024, it's now 66. The issue is, will that pattern continue? That's really the $64,000 question. Okay, well, let's take a look. Sorry. It's my wife. She took her grandson home, so I never turn it off for my wife. Anyway, if you look at page 17, this gives you, I'm sorry, page, no, not page 17, yeah. Let's go to 19, I'm sorry. It's, it's, it's easy to look at. Here's a pattern comparing live births to how many show up in kindergarten. So in 2019, page 19, you had 50 live births five years earlier, and you had 62 enrollment in kindergarten. That's fantastic. That's what you hope to see. Why? That says that people moved in with kids who weren't born in Chatham. How do we know that? It all fits. Thanks to Bureau of Statistics in New York State, we know that there were 50 kids who were born in your district, from your district in 2019. However, look what begins to happen. Your kindergarten enrollment, represented by the black bars, compare that to the number of live births in your district five years earlier. You see, for every year from 2020, 21, 22, it's, I would say, eight to 10, what, 10 fewer showed up than were born in your district. The number is in this, compared to, again, your size of your district, that's a lot. It's almost 20% of your, of those born, right? So however, look what begins to happen in 2023. You had 51 kids show up to kindergarten and 47 were born. That's good news. So something, some family decision changed. Okay, was, could it have been more kids? Could it, why were people born in your district? You had more kids go into kindergarten than were born just five years earlier. It could be that people moved in or families made different decisions about homeschooling and private schools. I'm not sure which, but we'll get to look at some of that data in a minute. See how this all connects with the little web of data? Now, take a look at 2024 showed up. Your goal is to have the black line be bigger than the gray line. And it might have a witness that are your kids in kindergarten in the public school. Down below on the page 19, those are kind of questions over a cup of coffee or a piece of pizza later or some other day. You may want to start talking about that. For example, what might influence households with preschool children to move to your district? I'm gonna take the low-hanging fruit. You have begun and have increased over the past couple of years a pre-K program. Usually, that's a great asset to encourage families to consider your district to move into. But there's a common question, what might influence households with preschool children born in the district to migrate from the district before their children are of kindergarten enrollment age? Is it all the school's fault that they move out? Of course not. Of course not. But that's where you start looking at economics in the area. Jobs that may not be there now, that were there even when the kids were born. Just thinking about all of that and having connections with your county planning of what, what's going on economically with jobs, particularly in the Chatham area. And then you can see, the other major question, we'll stop there, is what might influence households with preschool children to choose a private or a homeschool setting? That, I think, is a pretty relevant question, and I'll show you data why in a second. Okay? So if you look at page 25 now, so up to, from that page we were just on, 225, we show you the data of where the enrollment projections come from to, how do we get to estimate the number of kindergartners that you may have within five years? Okay, so that data's there, and how it's there is pretty well laid out. I do it that way, you should be able to, that should answer your question of how it's done. But let's take a look at the results of all that on page 25. The best news would have been, you see where it says five-year average and five-year median? The best news is, would have been, that the averages and medians over the next five years go up. Well, they're not. They're going up a little bit, and for the most part, they're staying stable. I would suggest you, that's good news. Given what I, our culture is not encouraged families to have kids or frankly, have more kids than maybe all of us have had or our parents. You know what I mean? So if you're stable or a little bit above, that's not bad news. It may not be as many kids in kindergarten as you would like, but it's not, it's not totally negative either. Okay? Well, let's look, and we talked, I referred to this a few minutes ago. Let's look at page 27. By the way, this is all real data. Thanks to Andy and the team. This is real data about your school district. And that's from some book somewhere. It's all local. Here's the pattern of non-public private school enrollment and homeschool enrollment based on how you're organized, K-5, 68, 912. And at the top are the raw numbers. And without a lot of math, you can see what's occurred. Alright? The non-public private school, if you compare 2019 to 2024, you have 10 fewer kids going to non-public private schools. And it's probably likely to the, that there are fewer number of kids who are born in your district. But it's still good news. You have 10 fewer. However, look at your homeschool pattern. In 2019, you had 44 young people homeschool. In 2024, you had 84. And those numbers are affected by the same things we've been talking about. Higher median age with regard to childbearing, fewer households with children. But you can see what's occurred with the decisions people have made about homeschooling. Now, let's break it down a little bit further. Okay? At the bottom of page 27, you can see we, we look at it by percentage of public school enrollment. So what's the percentage of public school enrollment of kids not going to public, going to homeschooling or going to private school? And I break that out for you. The good news is, in '24, you had 23.6%, which is lower than the previous three years. So as a percentage, the numbers of, numbers of households have going to, having homeschool or private school service has gone down a little bit. So your six-age average, six-year average is almost a little over 23% of the total number of children you serve. There's 23.4% of them in addition that are served in homeschool and private school. It's a lot of kids, but it's America. People make their own decision. It's a lot of kids, but it's America. People make their own decision. But I broke it down a little bit further on page twenty-eight, K five. This is where most, this, look at the percentage on, on average over six years. Almost twenty-seven percent of your K five population equivalent of that goes to, uh, private school and homeschool. So that's, if you focused anywhere, you'd focus there. Well, gee, why might that be? Is it totally just religious or are there other issues that may be that? Again, school can't solve all of that, without question. Are there, are there things we can do differently that'll help parents feel comfortable? Or encourage them to at least consider the public school a little bit more? Look at six, eight. This is interesting. Over the past two years, it's jumped. You have more six, eight children, percentage of the children you serve in-house in the public school, being served now in private school, homeschool. That sticks out like a, a red herring. You're, you got, this year you have almost twenty-eight percent of public school kids in six through eight, twenty-eight percent of that number is being served in homeschool and private school. Something to think about. You might say, gee, I wonder why? Again, a lot of things. You're not going to come to a definitive answer. But it'd be worth talking to your community about, talking to yourselves about. Again, those are pubescent years. Is that part of it? I don't know. We don't know. But it gives you a chance as you plan for the future to at least try to begin to take a look at, gee, could we do something different? Could we, whatever. Now, look at nine, twelve. This is the shining star. You see, that's why I said earlier, often schools will lose kids to private schools and homeschooling because, I'll just say it, that people perceive a problem with the public school. I don't think that's the case here in your district, because look at your set, look at your nine through twelve. Okay, if anything, that shows very strong faith in your school district for the kids to attend nine through twelve. I know it's high school and all that, but no matter, if there was a problem, it would show up in nine through twelve too, as far as kids and families running away from the district. That's not happening. That's not happening. So, what's a suggestion? Well, again, page twenty-nine, I give you charts to look at that. You may want to consider, um, to kind of lay out some of the things here. Page thirty-one at the bottom, I give you some ideas. Again, don't forget, people, families who kids go to private school or homeschool are still taxpayers. So in the name of good communication, you might want to think of simple, we're not talking big PR things, but simple ways to communicate with them, to learn more why they make those decisions. And encourage them maybe to ask questions about the program and whatever. Again, your judgment, whatever. But you have a set of people here that aren't coming to the public school, which is their right, absolutely. But maybe with some communication, answering those questions, they may look at it differently. Can't promise that, but it's worth thinking about. Okay? So, page thirty-three or thirty-four. Here are the enrollment projection results. Based on the, we do the projections three different ways, low men and high. Based on the projections, in grade five, you may increase by twenty-three pupils over the next five years for the most optimistic estimate, most optimistic. You'll have twenty-three more kids in K five. You see, you would see why, if you remember that pattern? This past five years ago and, and also the, the next three years, you've had more live births. So if they, there's a potential they will show up to kindergarten. Six, eight, the most optimistic is that you'll, you'll decrease by forty-three. The most conservative is you'll, you'll decrease by fifty-seven. Now that's not, doesn't take much of a crystal ball to see that, because you don't, you know why. You can go look at your past six years of K five enrollment. They've declined. Those same kids were now will go to six through twelve. So unless you have an influx of kids at that age level, yes, you'll have lower enrollments at six, twelve. It's just a matter of the population that you have. Grades nine through twelve may decrease by eighty-four over the next ten years. Uh, most optimistically and ninety-one, most conservatively. Now, that's, that's it in words. Take a look at page thirty-four. And then the reason we, we, SED requires schools to plan with a five-year outlook for K through six, for seven, eight, eight-year outlet, and for grades nine to twelve, a ten-year outlook. So that's why I break it down this way. Okay? So right now in K five, you have three hundred and thirty-four young people. The potential with the, with the high projection, the most optimistic, in five years, you may have three fifty-seven. Grade six, you have seventy-four now. It's likely you'll be around forty-six. And again, as we go up in grade level, the projections are more confident, because you can actually, if it continued and showed up for seven and eight, or, okay, or grade six, six and eight. Six and eight, you have two hundred and twenty-eight young people. Most optimistically, a hundred and eighty-five in eight years. Nine through twelve looks like the largest decrease. You have three hundred and twenty-six children now. Likelihood in ten years, you'll have between two hundred and forty-two and two hundred and forty-four. So when you're planning, again, you said, fine, Paul, those are numbers. So what do we do? Well, we gave you some insights about maybe looking at private schools and, and homeschooling that may be affecting the number of kids who show up in grades K through five or can actually get K through eight. In nine through twelve, you don't have a lot of migration of those kids. They're just, it is what it is. Kids in the lower grades will end up in nine through twelve, unless you get a large development or people move in. So you may want to pay attention to your nine, twelve, like, okay, if we do get fewer kids, what might that mean with our program vision? Because from going to three twenty-six to two forty-two, okay, that's sixty-eight and twenty-six. You're going to have impact on staff. You may impact, it may have impact on elective courses. May, may. So if that happens, how could you do it differently without decreasing your program, the value of the program you, vision you have for those kids? Some ideas might include, it's been an answer since nineteen forty-eight, not always the perfect answer. How can you share more with other districts, either with or without BOSs? And not necessarily at the BOSs Center. In your school. You see where I'm going? And maybe a neighboring school for something else. How can you continue to have the breadth of program you want, even though your enrollment in nine through twelve looks in all likelihood will be decreasing? I would suggest starting right away, a simple thing, and I'm sure you're already doing it, Andy's doing it, is you have openings in seven through twelve for teachers. Try to get as many teachers who are dual certified. Because the likelihood you will need pragmatically fewer teachers over the next five to ten years is very likely. So how do you help? Again, board members are also employers and you care about the people who work for the district. Well, how do you help people not be so negatively affected? Well, that, one way is that they are come duly certified. So you may not need all the English teachers, but you may have a social studies opening and an English teacher that you don't need anymore, if he or she is duly certified, could teach the social studies set of classes, because they're certified. See where I'm going? You think about this now, long before it happens. Okay, those are the kinds of things that you start thinking about. Uh, that with these kinds of estimates, the number of kids you'll be serving in the future. Page thirty-five. Remember I mentioned earlier, it's pretty clear to me, you've made a commitment as best you can financially to offer, uh, four-year-olds, uh, a, a preschool program. Because take a look at what's happened. In two thousand eighteen, okay, uh, you had forty-seven births and you served twelve of those forty-seven births, uh, four years later in pre-K. That's twenty-six percent. Look what you've done in twenty-three and twenty-four. This year, you're serving almost sixty percent of live births of kids born four years earlier in your pre-K program. Uh, okay, so it really comes down to, and it really is what all of the economic issues federally and even more, mostly federally, not necessarily state, it really comes down to what's your vision for pre-K? It looks like you're going to have capacity in your elementary schools to add more pre-K. That's the functional part, facilities. It looks like you, you got the room without having to build something. Okay? The issue is, can you afford it? More pre-K sections. Again, you can see, you had thirty-six pre-K enrollment, you have fifty-five in, this is in, in two thousand twenty-four. Fifty-five kids were born four years earlier. We're serving almost sixty-six percent of the kids who are born in your district. So this is one, again, I said the word vision a lot, but that's what it comes down to. That's where I'm forced to education, to help teachers, administrators, implement a vision. What's your vision for your kids? So pretty clear to me, your vision has been, let's do as much pre-K as we can. Can you afford to continue that vision? That's where your decision making comes in. But that's where your, your future pre-K is really up to you, because it's not mandatory. Okay? And with that, please, any questions, insights, anything at all, more than happy to have a discussion.
Hey, can you hear me okay, Paul?
I, I think, it is a little echo, so just tell me the
Uh, I, I, okay. I'll, uh, I'll be brief and then I'll mute my microphone. Um, the first question, I want to just get some clarification on something you just said. I'm seeing, of course, the numbers on population, the percent served there. Uh, in your estimation, do you think that there's a contributing effect where a higher, um, higher population service in, in pre-K is having an impact to enrollment?
Yeah, I found that in other school districts. And again, that's not the reason to do it. The reason, because it's, excuse the bias, it's the right thing to do, help younger children. However, the spin-off of that is that people gain, especially, remember when we were young parents? We still would, even when they got older. We would do anything for them, but we were so motivated that they had the very best. So if, if parents of pre-kits, kids have a good experience in a pre-K program in your district, they may think many more than even twice about, well, again, this is the pragmatic side, don't get me wrong. These economic times. This is startling, but I don't care where we are, even upstate where it costs a little less. It costs between twenty and thirty thousand dollars for taking care of a non-school aid. It's work. I know this sounds being pragmatic, but preschool encourages them, don't get me wrong. Education, but it helps families. And that gets them a chance to learn about the district and li- likely stay in the district.
Um, okay, well, that was, that's good information. Um, you know, like, it's not in your study, because the, the data's lumpy, but we, you know, we have our, um, homeschool numbers versus, um, uh, you, you know, out of school placement. You know, we have all that broken out by grade and it, it looks like, but I don't have any, um, we don't have enough data. So I'm curious, the larger trend here, we saw a big influx, um, during COVID into homeschooling. Um, a little bit into private, but mostly the homeschooling. And what we've seen is the cohort sort of moving up. And the, um, the last two or three years, we're back down to the, basically the percentages we were before COVID. And I'm wondering if that's, because we don't have many data points, is that something that people are seeing elsewhere?
Percentages in what, elementary or above grade five?
Well, we went, you know, I, I'd have to go pull the report, but you know, we went, we went, uh, you know, we, in, in grades, um, two through eight, two through nine, right, which would have been the K through five, you know, a few years ago.
Yep.
Um, you know, we have this homeschooling percentage that's almost double the other grades. And so I'm, I'm curious, it seems like those are likely to roll off, but I, I don't have enough data and I'm wondering what people are seeing elsewhere.
Well, what I've seen in the study, and I do quite a few studies, uh, with schools, is that you, you hit it on the head. There's, there's a beginning to be a, as you call it, a roll-off, like a decrease. But not to the extent that local folks thought it would once COVID was over. It's almost like, gee, this is working, but that's, it may not just be that. Again, there's been articles you can read about it, we won't go, that the influence of COVID on children is probably, well, was more harmful than we thought. With regard to interacting socially with other kids and whatever. So sometimes, I, I, I think that's an influence. That instead of arguing with a child and, they seem to want to stay in homeschooling. Not all, but the roll-off is not as fast as I, frankly, I thought it would roll off quickly, right? But it's not, and not just in your district.
We, we had some return, um, in, in, in the years following, but I'm also just looking at, um, you know, those sections are eventually going to graduate. And, and we're going to have whatever the new normal is, but it seems like when I look at, um, K one, it's at half the percentage rate as the, you know, the, the children who are a little bit older. Um, and, and I just, you know, with only two years to look at, that's not very meaningful.
No, it's not, right.
But I'm curious if other
Also central school districts, i- i- it's a similar pattern. And, uh, but I think the, the bright outlook is that you're, at least for now, until like your current, over the next three years, your secondary age is out. You, you've, you've retained a high percentage of, of kids who are of that age entering your secondary program. That's, that's a positive thing. That tells me people aren't running away from the district.
Yeah.
Really.
Um, I have one more, one more question I'd like you to speak to. Um, of course, I, just like, uh, by the way, thanks for doing the study for the third time for us.
It's okay. Well, it's, I gotta tell you, it's professional, it's, it's, it's very satisfying to help with tools like this. Where it's not easy. You know that, planning for a school, financially, program, yeah. So if there is any tool that can help, it's very satisfying, but go ahead.
So our K five numbers, last time you ran this report, uh, for us, which was, I think, twenty nineteen-ish. Um, we were looking forward to massive reductions in K five and it turned out we had massive reductions in K five. And so you hit the nail right on the head. Uh, it seems like in this report, what you were saying is that our K five is in all likelihood at a plateau right now and it may even increase. Um, and that really our reductions are going to be in those secondary ed grades that are going to roll off. Um, but in terms of, um, in terms of the overall decrease in enrollment, um, we're, we're unlikely, at least in the next five years where we have, you know, sort of visibility, we're unlikely to see um, decreasing in the K five area. Is that right?
Yeah, and, and it's, it's, it's most, it's, again, we, look at the live births. Again, once they're born and they enter kindergarten, it, they're kind of in the statistical system, you know what I mean? Is it right? They go from, and you can see the charts in the appendix, how it works. You look at the previous year to the next, what's the survival ratio, blah, 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 blah. So really is, the heart of this, that's why it's, really in this is trying to project based on historical pattern of live birth. What would a live birth be? Because they turn into seniors someday, hopefully. Anyway, so yeah, it looks like you've plateaued in live births and depending upon economics of the area, uh, I like that twenty to thirty-four age group is bigger. On the other hand, and I know this has been a plus for the community, is that you are a place where empty nesters like to move to. Okay, because of location and all those things I just talked about. It's a nice place to live. So you don't want to end that. On the other hand, the more housing you have with empty nesters in all likelihood, the fewer households you're going to have with it. It's, it's a catch twenty-two. It really is.
So I, I don't have any other questions, but maybe a, another day, if you have something you could point to that we could use as evidence to evidence to talk about that effect of early pre K on eventual enrollment, if there's anything to point at that's not just anecdotes, I would love to know where to look for that kind of thing, because ultimately, we're going to have to continue to defend this budget. And if if the right thing to do goes most of the way there, but not all the way there.
I hear you. And I and I I'll look for that. I haven't found any yet.
Okay, if you do think of
Best data is your historical data to school district. That's why I focus on that. I mean, as a superintendent, I hated, I'm sorry. Because some will come and say, well, in San Diego, who cares? No disrespect to San Diego. I want to know my district, my where I live in in New York State. So I guess trying to keep track of the patterning of your own data can help convince people. Okay, and I I'm guessing, I'm actually be guessing, I think the data is clear. These fit, for example, in 2024, the the people who came to pre K, they came with a reason. My, some of it might be, oh, my God, I need it. I need help because of, you know, daycare. But no, those are your best people to tell you why. No, this pre, especially now, look, this is almost December. You might want to find out from the people how they feel about the pre K program, what it's done for their kids. You see where I'm going? Generate that kind of data. And it helps document that, hey, this is good stuff for our kids in our community. Again, that's probably the most meaningful, I would suggest, but you're right, I will, I promise I will, if I, but I hear it is, I haven't found it yet.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah.
And and that one thing that we can do, like we did last year, is we will really start to advertise right after the holidays for pre K. Um, the biggest thing is we need as many people to enroll as possible, and that will give us data to see how many people are interested in a program. We want to do that earlier than later, so that way we can then plan for how many programs we need. So say if we end up getting 60 people showing interest, then that's a decision we have to look at, how many are we able to offer? And as you know, we only have enough for two classrooms to grant, and we would have to obviously budget for that. So just something, so I think the earlier we we recruit, um, we'll 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 start that after the holidays and we'll and we'll talk more about pre skate, uh, pre K as we get into the winter months um a- after we start to recruit and advertise uh for kids to enroll.
And and this, again, it's tying into what Andy just said, you know, and I don't know, I I you're looking at all of your staffing. And you're looking at your budget and, you know, staffing is your most expensive part. Often schools, even in tight, even in the tight times of the past five, six years, but even now is, who knows what's going to happen federally and statewide, but anyway, if by chance it's, there's clear data, you don't need all of the particular teachers you have now in a subject area. And you can, how can I say this? And you can afford that position within the realm of what you want the taxes to be. That's to be the right time to really try to add a pre K. Because public will say, well, why don't you just cut it all? Well, there's been, I think, I've observed the change in the public that, so for about the same amount, we can have more than we had last year. You see the approach? We're going to actually have more pre K. And it's pretty clear, you know, we got fewer kids, we don't need four English teachers, we need three and a half. I I get, I'm not, I'm an old English teacher, that's why I'm thinking on that. And I'm not saying that's what you look for, but if that happens about, that's kind of the time to add to that possibly, but that that's where you, remember that chart? Page one of the preface, that balance, that balance, anyway. Anything else? I would, really, I I I'm kind of optimistic because I I don't see a wide difference between low, mid and high concerning potential kindergarten. I wish it was more, but God, I'm happy it's not less, fewer. Okay, at least the projection's saying that.
And and when I was, when I was analyzing this data, um, I was relieved to see that our elementary school has stabilized. So we are looking for the future of Chatham going forward. We're looking anywhere between 50 to 60 kids right now per class, and that's really what the elementary school has right now. But as you, as
That's right. That's the high enrollment uh estimate. And again, you might say, well, what's it really low, mid and high? Well, is the glass, they say in the study, is the glass half full or half empty? I recommend you use the high if you're doing anything with facilities. Not that you're trying to over bill or over renovate, but look at the catch 22, you don't do capital work every, every year. So what's worse? Not projecting conservatively enough for the space you might need, or having frankly, maybe one classroom you don't need because if the low came in. I think your community will value not that, oh, well, the project wasn't enough, you got to come back and add another class or something. Uh, they'll they'll hate me, no, I don't say that. They don't like that. You know what I mean? It's just prudent. You know why? We have no control. Our doors are open 365 days a year. It's America, you come in and go. So how do you plan for that? Pretty tough. That help, I hope.
Yeah, that's very helpful. Thank you. Give me a question?
Okay, well, again, uh, part of the study service is that for the next six months, if if questions come up, if you're working, and I'm not saying, I don't know if you're doing capital work or not, but if in this six months, you may be considering something, whatever. And if if maybe uh or might have a question, whatever. I'm available by phone and we we work together. That's just part of me helping you use the tool, frankly. And then, uh, so whatever, we'll see how it goes. Okay?
Thank you, Paul. We appreciate your, you being here.
You all. Good luck. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
You too. Take care.
You. Bye bye.
Okay, we have board member comment. Would anyone like to?
Uh, I I have to say I'm feeling a little relieved. Uh, so I don't know if anyone else, I I know it's a lot, a lot of data, but that um could have been a lot scarier. So I think it's the best we could hope for.
I was definitely relieved to see the stabilization at the elementary school. I was worried that we were going to continue to, but that's, that's the good news here. Um, but we know what's coming in the middle and high school, right? And that's what we're, we've been working to do over the last year or so.
I mean, I liked seeing that it wasn't, like when I was reading through it and then he gave a great presentation explaining it, it wasn't catastrophic data. You know, I was like, yeah, it's going down a little bit, you know, maybe it'll roll off in the future, I think. I'm sort of thinking about the that uh balance he was showing. And you know, when you look at the amount of houses that are uh over 500K or whatever, you know, going up dramatically. And the big decrease in state funding and stuff like that, I think having a better picture of the budgetary pressures, the financial pressures on the school to balance out this data is important to see as well. I mean, this is the third time he's come in and give, given
He's been doing it since like 2004 or something.
Yeah, I mean, I know, like, you know, my my boss said 2005, they were discussing this same thing, what do we do with three, three buildings with this enrollment? So it's been a long time coming. I'm glad it's not catastrophic, but if we can have some kind of presentation, I mean, I guess, you know, Mike just arrived. He'll tell us about the, he'll tell us about the money problems. So I think that's kind of my question.
Well, this, this is the data we needed to go into the next uh area of study we need to do, so.
Yeah, now this, we will use this data to make decisions as we keep going through this process. For sure. This is, I think, the most important data we can, we need for this work.
Well, just not to change the subject, but to change the subject, I was at Shakespeare um on Friday night, and as usual, it was fantastic. I thoroughly enjoyed it and um, I just want, I hope, well, actually, Matt, you were there too. It's great.
I I was there. I didn't want to pop our student rep bubble there on that one, but but
I always do that.
I I I I remain amazed that somehow kids think Shakespeare is fun because it was definitely not that way when I went through school. It's pretty amazing, actually. But we we had our, we had some submissions, right? So we had, we had four, was that the total?
With four submissions, um, and then we'll be reaching out to everyone um to set up interviews for December 2nd. And then they'll be appointed on December 9th. So I wanted to say thank you for everyone that submitted applications. It was nice to get such a big turnout.
And we have an election coming up too. We always need board members, so.
That's very important. Coming in May, we have an election and we will have four open seats, which is a lot. So I hope everyone that's listening can give it some thought and maybe put their name on, so. There's a, there's a need. Superintendent report.
All right. So I wanted to talk a little bit about attendance, because I know this has come up a couple of times. So all three schools have been tracking um their attendance for this school year, um, and also providing interventions. I I'm not go, we don't have a report to give today because we're focusing on academic and enrollment. I didn't want to give too much reports, uh, but at the next meeting, I'll give a brief overview of what we've been finding. Um, the first quarter obviously recently ended, so we'll be reporting to the board every quarter on our attendance and talking about some interventions we're doing. Um, but overall, we've seen an increase in attendance from last year, which I'm really happy to say, but more details on that um coming up next meeting. The request for proposal is going out this week to find a consultant to support the the work that we've been talking about for the future of Chatham. What you saw today is a, is a big piece of that work. Um, but what the board has decided is they want to hire a consultant to help us navigate that work, um, to work with stakeholder groups, to come up with some different scenarios for the future. Um, so um, as 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 we've discussed, um, we are, we are going to be looking for a consultant to help us with that work. But more, an RFP will be going out hopefully by the end of this week to consultants all over the region. Um, from there, um, the board will review them, the board and I will review them, and then ultimately, the board will make a final decision on what consultant they want to help us navigate some of this work. Um, and that after we do the consultant work, then we'll present um, a timeline of what we're hoping to be able to accomplish through the next couple of years. This is going to be a multi-year process. Um, because it's going to take that long to do. Um, we need to be looking at the budget, we need to be looking at the building conditions, and obviously the enrollment, which we did today. So more details to come on that. And one, one other thing I want to say about this is I I promised to the community after discussions with the board that we promised to engage the entire community and seek out input from all, all stakeholders. I also had the privilege of going to Shakespeare. Unbelievable, unbelievable how amazing those students do and the excitement and the passion um for for the work is is unbelievable. Um, they're going to be presenting in Lenox, I believe it's Thursday of this week, so if anyone didn't get to see it, our our Chatham is our, the first um performance of the entire um Shakespeare um piece. So they are presenting, I believe at 6:30 on Thursday. I also had the privilege of participating in the faculty versus faculty basketball game. Now, I am not a basketball player, but I did my best. And I I went on Facebook and I saw way too many pictures of me trying to do shots. One, it looks like I'm whipping it at the my wife and kids loved looking at those, let me tell you. I'm not a basketball player, but it was a lot of fun.
You made a three pointer.
I won, yeah, one three pointer. I tried, it was funny. Um, so that was a lot of fun. We we all enjoyed it. And thank you to the faculty that participated, and that was a fundraiser for our freshman class. I also wanted to publicly um just congratulate Scott Steltz. Um, about a week and a half ago, I had the privilege of going to um the New York State Baseball Hall of Fame um ceremony that he was inducted in. Amazing, what an amazing night that was. And we are so lucky to have Scott and his leadership, and I'm so happy he was honored um in that way. Um, if he he had a beautiful speech, we ended up putting, I hope he was okay with this, but I ended up putting the speech on Facebook. I had many, many likes, but if you're interested in in what that looked like, take a look at Facebook to see his very gracious acceptance speech. It was great. Congratulations to Scott. Um, this Friday is our first play of the year. Um, I I've never seen this play, I'm excited about it, but our middle school is is going to be performing Dr. Ed Wing Jr. So I've never seen that one. I'm excited about learning about it. It looks like a lot of fun when I looked it up. So that's this Friday and Saturday at our middle school. That's all I have for today.
Hi, Terry, you want to present academic report?
Good evening, everyone. Um, Harris will bring up the presentation. And I will also introduce, I think, uh, many of you know Nicole, but I will formally introduce her to you. So Nicole McCollum, she is a senior data analyst uh at Quest R3. And um, for this report, Nicole and I worked very closely. She is indispensable with putting all this data together. So thank you, Nicole, for all of your work with that. And um, what we will do is we'll walk you through um all the data, the New York State data, this is three through eight. Excuse me, ELA math, science, and then uh the regions as well. So one thing I'll just quickly say is uh, it's November and we're going over this now, and part of the reason for that is the scores get embargoed. And what that means essentially is um Narik, the NISA don't want to publicly release everything in case there are errors to be corrected. So that's what takes so much time to get to where we are. Um, I will share with you also that yesterday, we shared all of this data in the three buildings, the principals ran um data meetings, data talks with all of the faculty. And uh, so we shared all of this, there's lots of, but there's many things to celebrate, areas to grow in as well. And um, what I'd like to do is Nicole, like I said, she'll drive through kind of the data piece. And then when we get through K through eight, we'll pause, see if they have questions, and then what I thought I could do is share with you. Here are some things we're doing right now, based on this data, a little bit of the I ready, but what are we doing with all of this and and where are we going from here? So we'll pause there, we'll pause after the high school, and then Nicole's going to share one other thing that we're going to do tomorrow with the teacher leaders. So that's kind of what we have for you and Nicole.
So before you start, Nicole, I just want to say a couple of quick things. I just want to remind the board that this is a snapshot in a day, right? This is very important data um that the state's um it's, we have to do as a district. Uh, and this, it uses this data to um assess students and also unfortunately, like it or not, to compare school districts, right? It's something that we have to do. So I just want to remind everyone, it's one day in the life, one day of the life of a Chatham student, but it's a very important data point. And just to review some of the steps, this is using and sharing state testing data, in my eyes, has to be very strategic. It was very important to us as an administrative team that our teachers didn't see this for the first time today, right? So um, that's why what Terry said, our our principals, Terry and I and Nicole spent a lot of time uh with our principals, making sure they understood the data first, and then we asked them to present it to their schools, and that's what happened yesterday. Uh, that's a very important piece. As an administrative team, we've been analyzing the data a while. We weren't able to share it with anyone yet, but we've been talking a lot about that. And then like Terry said, um, the teacher leaders are going to be taking a look at it, and then I just wanted to mention that parents will have access to this data of their individual student um within the next couple of days. That's going to be going out. Terry will send uh uh in a piece on that. But the most important part of this data, the reason we spend time on it, it's how you use it. And I can tell you, we are going to use it because it's a data point that's given. We can all say a million times, oh, maybe it's not the best data point, but it is an important data point that the state mandates that we have to utilize. So we will be using this to improve our instruction, that's important. And and one other thing you're going to see on here, we had a very large opt out rate last year, much larger um than the rest of the state. And that's something that I wasn't expecting, to be honest, as a new superintendent, I wasn't prepared to see those numbers. I've saw those numbers in past districts go down a lot. I wasn't, I wasn't ready, I'll be honest, I was kind of blindsided, I wasn't prepared for that. But one thing that we're going to do this year is we're going to work hard to educate our families. We can't convince people to take these, but we can educate families about what they are, how they've changed them through the years, and how they're helpful to students, about giving them the support. But they're also helpful for us as a district to assess ourselves, so we can make ourselves better. So um, that's something I'll be talking to the board more about. Um, Terry and I have a couple of meetings scheduled to brainstorm on how we can do that. All we can do is try, and we're not going to force anyone, we're just going to educate parents about it. So a lot more to come on that. Sorry, Nicole, I won't say anything else.
Well, I mean, I don't have to present the first 10 slides, but no.
I do that to Nicole. Nicole and I have been working together for many, many years, probably close to 10 years, Nicole, close, right? So we know each other very well, uh, she knows that I sometimes like to go through her slides and talk. I won't say another word, Nicole, it's all you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. And as as Andrew said, this is um, one piece of data. I honestly think of this report and stuff as base, I like to think of an apple, right? We have the skin of the apple, that is our overview, it's the outer shell of it, it's summary data. And that's kind of what I have here with a little bit where we dig in a little bit. Then when you dig into that apple, right, you have that flesh, it's the good part, the juicy part. To me, that's when we start diving into what the data is telling us. But not just like the numbers, but actually like looking at the individual tests and going into the standards and the percents and how the kids answered and what the release questions are. So that's, we're going to get there, and then from that point to the core, and that's where we make decisions based off of what we're seeing. Not off of just that state test and what that data is telling us, but that combined with those other multiple points of information that we have. Not off of just that state test and what that data is telling us, but that combined with those other multiple points of information that we have, other assessments, our day-to-day interactions with those students, those pieces of information where we come up with a decision or change or something we want to try. And then the seed of the apple is our students and that's where we want them to grow, right? And that's where we check our, what change did we make, what we implemented, did it work? Did it not work? Did we see growth? So I kind of like to think of it as an apple and just that this is an outer shell, this is just overview data, it's important to have. And yes, we do comparisons. Can't share as much as we were hoping to because the state has not officially released the complete embargo where we can talk about actual statistical numbers that other districts have. But I did put together the rankings that we've done every year of how we fall in the Questar region to other districts. And so I was able to include that in this presentation as a number, so where we ranked. But I can't give you like percents or how close we were until that information is released and hopefully that's coming soon. Usually by now we do have it, it's not like the enrollment data that's four years off. But we do, like it's usually out by now, so hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll see that. And once those quests are, once the embargo is completely lifted and it is public data, we will share those with you, those spreadsheets with you as well. All right, so that was my little disclaimer, I guess. Next slide, please. Do you want me to have the clicker? All right, so what I'm going to do today is kind of go over like an overview of where we are currently, like just like about three, three data, then we'll dive kind of into more of the three through eight stuff and then the regions, see if I can get it. There we go. All right, so we're going to kind of go through like these three points. So overview proficiency, so when I say proficiency, I'm talking those level threes and level fours that we have on the state results, right? So that is what is considered proficient for New York State three through eight tests. So for ELA, for Chatham, so Chatham's in red, you'll see, and New York State, they released this number when they released the preliminary data. So yes, there was a cleanup period from the release of the preliminary data to when they finally give us the official embargoed release sometime in the next week or some, weeks or so. But they should not see that significant of a change. If there is some data cleanup, it's more like within the district cleanup of one or two students weren't counted, that should have been counted, things like that. So we're not going to see the overall state percentage change much. So that's why I included it here. So you'll see for three, three overall Chatham's proficiency was 40%. New York State saw 53% for ELI. In math was 45%, New York State was 55%. Science five or eight, these are our newer tests that we don't have a lot of historical data on because they, you know, they changed the curriculum of the test, but we were 64% in fifth and eighth grade for Chatham and the state was around 44%. So when we try to look at it, sometimes looking at just these percents is like, well, I don't, what does that mean? Like really, like is it telling me, are the kids going up, are they going down? We look, we can look from like third grade multiple years and we do that. So what has third grade been in the last two years compared to where we are now? Those are different groups of kids though, right? So this is just kind of like a little peek about like a cohort. So if we were looking at, for example, grade three for ELI 2023 here, we had 46% proficient. And 2024, we're 44, so not much of a change, right? We're pretty stable there. But then last year we saw us jump up to 69%, so that is a significant increase in proficiency for ELI. And we saw that in our same group of cohort kids moving through for 23 to 24 and 25 for math, we saw an increase as well. This cohort is, is not the exact same group of kids because kids move in and out of the district, right? So, but it's about the same kids, like it's, it's those kids moving through that by the grades. So this kind of just gives us a little bit of like a peek at how those groupings are doing as they move through. It's information to have. So let's like dive more deeper into it. So what I did was, there's so much information when, when you want to look at the state results and it's, I could make a slide that could, it could take us a couple of hours to go through and I didn't want to do that. So I kind of did like a dashboard view here. So there's a lot of information jammed into this one slide and I'll take some time right here to explain it and I'll move faster on the other slides. But just stop me if you have questions as we go. But so this is grade three proficiencies for levels threes and fours, so proficiency three and four. So let's look at, up here in the top right in the purple is what the state has said their preliminary overall proficiencies are for third grade. And this is, red is Chatham. Gray is both the BOCES, so that is our component districts, our 21 component districts. And the RIC is our whole northeastern piece, so that is a much larger number. It's really all like north, northeastern New York really. So you see a much larger number there of kids populate in that. So for ELI three is on one half, math is on the other half. And then we look at our number of kids tested and how many kids sat for that test? And what percent of that grade levels population took the test? So for ELI three, we had 39 sit for the test, 64% took the test of our grade level. Math, we were a little bit higher, 44 was 72% tested.
Could you, could you just clarify the percentages are based on total enrolled?
The percentages of all the kids who took the test, what they got, how many kids got three or four proficiencies for grade three?
Oh, okay, so it's not, it's not the opt-in rate?
No.
Okay.
Of, it's, well, if you think about it, it is the opt-in rate, it's of the kids who took the test.
So it's of the total enrollment in third grade, only 69, 64% of those students of the total enrollment took the test.
Okay, that's, that's what I was looking for.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's our actual numbers of kids in the class.
Yeah, but when, when we measure enrollment, that includes IEPs, does not include out of district placement.
Correct, correct. So that's in, who are enrolled and sitting in the class, not, yeah, not, not, right, not, how about outside placement?
Outside placement, if they're in our, if they're our students, they are in here.
Yeah, that's, but, but not private, not homeschool.
Not private, not homeschool.
But if we, if we send someone to a BOCES or something, they're included in our numbers, yeah. And that's very minimal, you know, that's not a lot of kids.
Nope.
So is that much, is 64%? I mean, you said like a lot of people opted out, do you have like in comparison to other districts, is that super low or?
Uh, 64% tested is very low in comparison to what we're seeing in other districts, other districts are getting up into 95% testing.
Yeah.
We were, some districts at 100% at this point.
Yeah.
This, this is not, this is a very, and I'm afraid because of this, we're going to be targeted as a, because this is an anomaly, talking to other superintendents. This, this was, this was a norm back, how many years ago, these numbers?
It was quite a few years ago when we went through the whole opt-out movement. But we have, once we decoupled a lot of the APPR scores with, with the state tests and having them linked together for the three through eight especially, we started seeing more, more enrollment, more students taking the test and sitting for the exams. And it's also, I think about once, when parents started realizing how we were using the data, it wasn't a gotcha in any way, shape or form. It's actually is being used to try to help make informed decisions on how we can better our district, better ourselves, better with the growth of our students.
And, and what has happened through the years, New York State has changed the tests for the better. You know, they're no longer these long multiple, multiple day, they actually made a lot of good changes to it. So what we have to do is we have to explain that to parents.
Are they CBT at this point?
All of them, yeah, and we've been for a while, but yes, yes.
Yeah.
Computer-based testing, so they're no longer paper.
So it's 100% across the board, everybody has to be computer-based tested now. Chatham has moved to that a long time ago, or at least multiple grades, they kind of phased it in. But it's 100% now required for three through eight to be computer-based testing. So they are shorter tests though, and these tests were more developed by teacher input than they had been in the past, which was where we were having the big, why we had the part of the movement and the change because the tests were very long, very demanding, over three days and took almost a half, like, I mean, it was a lot, so they have made a lot of significant changes. There's still always work to be done.
Are they, are they adaptive, the test?
No, not at this point. Yeah.
Not to belabor in this part of the report, but as we say, we're going to work with parents so they better understand the test and what it is. It would be probably good if we came up with some specific things that we were going to do there. So as you know, this was not something we should see happen again if we can at all.
Yeah, Terry and I have, and I've done this in my past district. We had a lot of good success of educating parents and making the change. And to be honest, I, I, I did this a bunch of years ago and it kind of was off my radar, you know, because it's been so long. And I thought, and I guess I just assumed that happened in Chatham before, I don't know, did it?
We, we never did an opt-in campaign. We were considering it one, one year, we even studied another district that went from the 60s to somewhere around 90s after an opt-in campaign in one year.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I saw in New Lebanon, it was really, and we're not, and like I said, we're not going to force anyone, we're just going to educate. Yeah, so we'll, so we'll, we'll, and I'll share more on that, but yeah, we have, we have a couple of meetings scheduled in the books. And we'll, and we'll start putting that out in January after the holidays.
Okay, so over here in the gray box, you'll see the Questar Rankin. So this is what I was talking about where I can't give you the details of where you, where you are percent-wise, but out of 21 districts that we have in our Questar Rankins, so where you fell, so eighth, you were in eighth position down from the district that scored the highest proficiency rate to the lowest positions, proficiency rate, sorry. And in math three, it was 14. So over here in this bottom left corner, I, I, part of me feels like percents are great, but when we're talking small district or smaller district, we need the actual numbers sometimes. So this is where I like to get into like the counts of it. So you'll see the outer side circle here is my math group. And it's broken down by number of kids who scored that level one, level two, level three and level four. So red, three, we had three kids total in ELI. So yes, we only had 49% that tested, achieved proficiency. But only three of them were level one, scored the lowest, where they are considered significantly behind. Our yellows are level two, is really, level twos are kind of considered as New York State partially proficient. So they are almost there. That's where the majority of our kids kind of that didn't test proficiency sat. And, and it's good to see that, so you have 22 kids right there. Those 22 kids could be right on the verge of going into level three, depending on where those state cutoffs were. So and then we have 16 in green and our highest level four, which is exceeds grade level expectations, we had three there. And then the inside count is your ELI group. No, so it's a little bit different for the state test and it's different by grade level. They have these scale score cutoffs and there is no magic formula that we know of how to calculate it out. They say they don't change it, but they do, and this past year, they most recently did change it because their numbers were overall for New York State were lower, were being lower, so they did change the state cut scores. What you're thinking of is regions level, when we start talking about regions, that's where we're going to be talking about that 85%. I also included a subgroup of our main subgroups where we see the majority of our students when we want to look at that. And that's our students with disability subgroup and our economically disadvantaged subgroups. Those are two that we have most consistent, that are highest among of all the subgroups that New York State counts that we see. So that's something important to kind of just see where we're at for proficiency. Okay, any questions on like the format? All right, so I'm going to move forward, if you have questions, let me know. So this, this is something I'm not, I'll be honest, not my favorite charts. But it's something that a lot of districts do want to see. So I put it in there and it kind of just shows you like a 10-year view with a blank periods missing in the middle. There you see 19, we're missing 20, 20, 20, 20, 21, because those state tests were not given then, 20, 20 at all, 21 was optional to districts to decide if they wanted to or not. So this is kind of looking at the last 10 years where we were for proficiency for ELI three and ELI and math three. What I don't like about this is, as we just pointed out, the scale scores change from year to year. The tests have changed drastically from 2015 to where we are now. So it's not comparing apples to apples, right? It's, but it's something to kind of see, are we on a steady trend for proficiency? Yes, we are right now, like for, for ELI three, and it might show us something different in other grade levels. So it is something to look at and then investigate further maybe with questions and trying to like see why. So grade four proficiency, we had 40% proficient for ELI four, 49 for, for math four. We were 16th for the Questar Rankins out of the 21, 12th for math four. You have your counts, we do math, you see for students with disabilities, we did had 0% achieved proficiency. So that I have, we had nine ELA students with disabilities and we had 10 students with disabilities in math. And that's just looking at proficiency, so you know, that, that, this is where you want to dive into more like, okay, well, how many of them are level twos? Where are they? How can we help support them to move them forward, that kind of thing? ELI four for the 10-year look, this is, um, this is a chart that was updated, that's why we sent you our most recent one. Was updated because we caught, I, I had a typo. So we are updated for that, so you have that now, the new numbers match there. You'll see that we are ELI for the last four years, actually I should say math four down at the bottom. Does on mine, so I'm not sure, is this the new PDF, Terry, that we just sent to the board? Okay, it should say math four and it should say 54%? Nope, I'm on, I'm on my, I'm on my last chart, sorry. Should say 49, does it say 49? Okay, so the number is right, just the title's wrong, it should say math four. But what I wanted to show there is that you're seeing over the last four years that it has increased. So we are moving in the right direction there.
Could I ask you about this? Because I know the, the tests change every year and so these trends are not super useful, but I feel like the difference between Chatham and the state is a little bit more stable because if they change the test, it's changed for everyone.
Yeah.
How have we moved over the last 10 years there? Us versus the state? Because that's, that's sort of like, you know, which direction are we going would, would really answer that question.
Yep, that's something I could try to put together for you.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, this is grade five proficiency, so overall the state's overall proficiency rate was 57. Math four, our math was 54%. So we're right there, really with, in comparison to where the state at was, we're over for ELI. We're with 69% of what the state overall average was and we're doing more, better than where we, our RIC and our BOCES was. We were third for the Rankins for Questar for fifth grade ELI and 11th for math. And this is another one that we had a low grade level test. We had 64% tested here, 66% for math. So that was another one that we saw a, a, a drop in number of kids taking the test. Grade five students with disabilities, we had four in the math that, were in that four, four in the math group and six in the ELI group. Okay, so this is the proficiency over the last few years. So you kind of want to just see what the state level is with each of these years, right? What the state overall proficiency was? Okay, okay, I can definitely add that to you.
No, it's the difference between us and the state, the delta.
Yep, okay.
And I, I just want to point out fifth grade here, look, look at the change between 24 and 25.
Yeah, that, so on the math side, the whole BOCES region went up. So, because we're right in the middle, I think.
Yeah, right about the middle.
Did they change the test significantly?
Not significantly, no. The tests really haven't changed in the last two to three years. It's more, they changed the scale a little bit of what they, what would be considered proficient changed a little bit. But if you look at your comparison. Um, but if you look at your comparison to the state here, you were above even or right where the state was.
So that, that ELA is outstanding and I sorta wonder how we can account for that. Is it just a few out?
So, so they made a huge change to the curriculum last year. Um, and we can get into that another time. I don't know, I don't, Kristen, is there anything you wanted to say on that? Like we, without getting into?
No, we don't need to dig there, but we should put a pin there and.
So.
Uh, yeah, I wanna talk about it more.
They made a lot of changes and we're using that as an example to learn from others. And we're really digging into what they did last year and how other grades can continue. We've had a lot of conversations about that. And I know Kristen had a meeting with her whole staff yesterday and there was a lot of, a lot of buzz around that, correct Kristen? So well, you know, we'll continue to keep you updated on that. So there is something that they did that is good and we're gonna continue to try to.
Great.
Yeah, it was really good. It would make, and you wait till you see their sign scores. It really is something, fifth grade really.
All right, for grade six proficiency, the state average was 51% for ELA and math. Um, this is where ELA, we dropped significantly at a 26% in comparison to the state and our RIC and BOCES. Um, math, we were just above the state average of 57%. We did have 74% test, so around the mid seventies for low, mid to low seventies for ELA and math here. Um, so we, you know, it's not a horrible number of students that are not included into it, but there is still, you know, a good 25% missing from this population. Um, our Rankin's, we were 21st for sixth grade and eighth for math.
Can, can you remind us of, oh, the inside and outside, inside?
Outside's your math group and your inside is your ELA, yeah. Yep.
What happened with this one, Mr.? The last one was so good.
The data's so lumpy from year to year. It's, it really is.
That's why I really say that this is just like an overview is an outer shell. And I really like, what I liked is what we get in when we start digging into it more and go in diving into where the standards are, where we're looking at individual students and skills. Guess it's a little bit more valuable information. Ten-year proficiency rates. Grade seven ELA, we had for New York State 51% proficient, um, and for math 56. So we were low again in ELA for, um, for Chatham. And we're also low for math in comparison to our BOCES and our RIC. So we were in 21st as well positioned for ELA seven and 19th for math. And we do see, we have a, a lot of students in those, in those level one numbers here. Um, 27 in for ELA and 19 for the math group. Um, but we also have a good amount in our almost partially proficient group too. So that's something to look into. And in grade seven for students with disabilities, we had 0% achieved proficiency for both ELA and math. Um, we had 16 students with disabilities in ELA and 15 for math that took the test. The last 10-year look. And then we come to our grade eight proficiency for New York State was 52% um, for ELA and math was 47%. So we're, we're pretty close to that for ELA eight. We were at 48% um, over our BOCES area, um, and over and close to our RIC. So, and then for math, we were at 41%. We had 82% test for the ELA test. Now math, or the math gets a little tricky. So we only had 42 students sit for the math test. But we have 73% tested and that 73% tested is because I included our eighth graders who are our advanced kids. So we do not double chat, test in Chatham. It is up to the districts to decide if they want to double test. We do not, um, nor do most of our dis, re, um, region. So if we didn't, if, uh, if we just looked at eighth grade overall, who took the test, it would've been 59%. But I wanted to kinda get a good impact of where we were. And I'll, I'll come show you the combination because for accountability purposes, when we start getting that and that's coming, that report will be coming the next, probably a few weeks to, um, a month or so. That is going to, the accountability is they take what those, what those regions kids earned. And that accountability gets put into that eighth grade group. So we will have that there. Um, and then you have, so we were ninth for the Questar Rankin, um, for ELA and 13th for math eight. And we had six students with disabilities in ELA seven, or in ELA eight for students with disabilities and for math. Our proficiency Rankin's or 10-year rate look. Compared for math eight, we definitely have drastically, uh, moved up. We were really in the single digits at one point. I actually didn't believe that when I was putting it together and double checked with the state report card because, um, but, so we have moved significantly in the right direction there and leveled out with everybody else in, in the county. And I don't know how far off we were from the state, like you said. So that would be something interesting to look at for back when the tests were settled. Science five, this is our fairly new test. This is probably, I think, only our second year of giving it. Yeah, so second year. And the overall state proficiency rate was 45%. And Chatham, um, had 75% that tested, test proficient on that test. So that is, that is huge. Um, we had 64, only 64% of that, that group even tested too. So we're still missing a great group of kids, um, from that testing population. Um, for science eight, we were 55. The state average is 44%. So we're also doing a well over where would state averages and even where our, our RIC and BOCES are. Um, we were first in the region for, um, science five and fifth for science eight.
And I, and I just wanna say, these are incredibly challenging tests. The, these are, are really mostly reading tests, to be honest with you, um, with, you know, so the days of, of those multiple choice type, science-based content questions are over. The, these kids are really interpreting this, this is really great to see. And that's why we're really honing in on what they've been doing and how they've gotten here. And how did these kids really show this much success in such a challenging test? That, that teachers, um, didn't have a lot of information, um, to prepare the kids for because they're brand new, right, over the last two years? So it's, this is a huge celebration.
So this chart is looking at taking our science and our math and combining it with the state tests with the regions tests. Okay, so math eight, we, they take, and then if they don't take math eight, they're taking the algebra one test, right? So out of that, we, we take up, we had 52 total kids take the test, 73% of our grade level tested. So we're still missing, you know, a little over 25%, but, um, and then this is broken down by levels. So level one was, we had 27% in level one, up to 19% in level four. Now, the way the state does it is when they sign the levels, they also then take it to the regions and say, okay, if you got an 85 or higher that you're a level four, if you pass the regions, you're 65 to 84, you're a level three for accountability. So those kids that got the 65 to an 84 are in that level three group. Um, and then that's the same for science. So if they're not taking the science eight, they're taking the regions level science. And we had 50 total kids take that test for 70% testing.
And I'm a little confused here. This is only region scores on this page, is that right?
No, so this is combined. So this is taking our level ones, twos, threes and fours for the science eight, say, okay? And then the regions get broken into one, two, threes and fours as well. To, to account for our accountability. So all those kids, those eighth graders that took that algebra regions, um, then they would be, whether they got a pass in score, just passing 65 to 84, they're gonna be in our threes. 85 or higher is gonna be in our level fours. And I, nobody got a one or a two that took the regions that was an eighth grade advanced student. Um, so this is kind of looking at, so when we get our total accountability score, we can see how many kids and what percentages we had in each of those groups. So of our eighth grade population, we had 50 some, some, some 50, little more than 50% proficient.
Nicole, I'm gonna jump in just for a sec. So we'll, we'll pause there, so that's K eight and we'll get ready to go to high school. But I just wanted to share with you some of the things, so you, you look at that and the logical question is, so what are we actually doing, um, about this? So a few things and I'll just point out a couple, a couple of factors and then actionable things we're doing. So, uh, in the elementary schools, so I see the lower grade levels, looking at this data, we're focusing on strong phonics and phonemic awareness and really trying to build up, um, using the science of reading to make sure that our kids are getting the highest level of literacy reading instruction to be prepared to meet the, the state standards. Um, we've talked about iReady. One of the good things with iReady that is adaptive and then also because of not only the diagnostic data that I shared with you, there's individual modules based on the diagnostic and how the kids score. So that's another way to hone individual skills. So it's not just, that's one difference, I think, with iReady and you saw, most of our, all of our kids took it. So there is really no opt-out with that too. So merging those two pieces of data together. Um, the tier two and tier three interventions that we offer speak directly to, it's not just iReady. It's also standards base where kids are, are struggling too. Um, we have that universal screener, which is iReady because they all take it. But then we have other diagnostics, other things that we're looking at with individual students. So all of those things factor into how we're trying to address the data here. Um, professional learning. So you know, we just had a PD day on November 4th. I just wanted to share some of the workshops. Literacy in the science classroom was something that our teachers attended. Um, modifications for L's, so how to modify instruction for English language learners. Um, literacy instruction using informational texts right out of the data, both iReady and state data. Uh, math, we had someone from Curriculum Associates come and offer, um, instructional tips and strategies on how to use the math program better. So that's another way where, where actions we're taking based on the data. Um, grade six through eight, ELA, I mean, when we look at that. So, um, factor based, we have three brand new ELA teachers in the middle school. And so, um, I know Brett and Mike and, and I know myself, I've worked very closely with them. And I'll just share with you, um, they're do, they're teaching ELA through thematic units. And what they're doing each quarter is a common interim assessment that all the students are taking, completely based on New York State standards, which is going to give us predictive data. And they just actually took this, so we should have the results of their first quarter one very soon. And we can say, where are the kids right now? This'll give us more real-time, where are we? Um, so hopefully that will be useful on a whole lot of levels. Um, and then one thing, and we started to talk about this a little bit. I do just wanna say that, that both eighth grade, but that, that fifth grade score, um, where I was a year and a half ago, when, when this test first came out of the BOCES, I mean, there was outcry statewide that thank God we didn't give this first or the opt-out numbers would've been because it was that challenging. And this is a reading test and the, I mean, it was statewide, universal. This test was really, 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 really hard. What our fifth grade accomplished is remarkable. It really is. And, and so another thing we're doing is we're trying to mine, what did we do? What, what did they do that fifth grade team? Where we can kinda bottle that magic and share it with, with everyone. Um, and then you'll see a couple of things in, in the region's data too. What, what did we do there? And how did we accomplish that? So trying to fine tune that, Kristen has started discussions, um, with the grade five team. And, and we're having those to say, how can we replicate that elsewhere? Um, because, and again, I, I'll just echo this for a third time. The big criticism with the science test was this is a reading test. So the logical question is then, are, are reading ELA school, you know, everything should kind of, but it doesn't work that way, right? With, with those cut scores and the tests are different. But we have definitely some great information to find in that, what happened in that fifth grade, um, test last year. So while we're pausing, Nicole, anything else you wanna add to that?
Well, I do think our fifth grade ELA scores was way above the state too.
Absolutely.
So that can kinda go and coincide with that reading for the math, science, yeah. It was science five and then ELA five.
And I think eighth grade kinda speaks to that too. Cause those scores are, are pretty solid and their science scores are very, very good.
Terry, did you, um, look at the kind of commonalities of students who didn't take the exams?
The, the opt-out student? No, and, and that's a que, that's a very fair question. Uh, Andrew and I have talked about this too, is I don't know, uh, cause you can't really predict how the opt-outs impact the data, right? I mean, literally you can't, but it does impact the data. It just don't always, there's really no way to have an answer to that, but that's a fair, interesting question.
Okay, and the three new teachers are three new opportunities too. And it looks like they're, they're buying into that. And whatever those fifth grade teachers did, and I know how hard they worked at it, whatever they can share with others, you know, it's just, it is a celebration.
And, and you know, and one thing, Kristen, you know, without getting into the minutia of everything that we're, the one thing that is coming through pretty clearly is working together as a team. And, you know, kind of team teachers, team teaching and not just dividing by content area, but doing more as a fold. That's one thing, Linda, I think kinda where you're going is we're starting to hear that, right, Kristen? That, that is a strength when they truly can work together and put, um, not throw the content out, but it doesn't matter what your area is, we're teaching kids. And when we do that, and, and again, that thematic kind of teaching and learning, we're seeing great success there. And, and the teachers are excited about that. So hopefully we see that.
And they're, and they're using innovative approaches too, which, you know, if you look at our classrooms, a lot of our classrooms are running the same they did 30 years ago, not just here, but everywhere. They, they are doing things differently, um, which is really exciting to see. And that's what we're looking at too. We'll talk more about specifics of all that at another time as we go, but.
I'm wondering about sixth and seventh grade though, cause those grades are super, those are struggling grades. And you kinda like wa, like, what do you think?
From COVID.
I mean, I, yeah, you track it back, you're like that COVID hit in like second and third grade. I mean, is that, is that the story or is that? What would you say? And kinda what's, what are you gleaning from?
I've been watching those numbers.
It looks like the cohort's been struggling for years, but you know.
So all I can say is we're, we've identified that and it's an area we're focusing on going forward.
Okay, so go, moving forward into regions data. So it's basically looks a very similar format to the way I did the three through eight proficiency. So that way it was easier to understand. Um, but it's a little bit different for the fact that pass in is greater than or equal to 65% and mastery is 85% or higher. Now, there's like, some regions will see that there's like, there's five different levels. Um, this one for ELA, there, you'll see that there's five different levels here and they broke it down by, so it's a level four is 79 to 84. How they came up with that means it's a level four? I don't know, if you go to algebra, you'll see it's like a 78. Like, so it's not consistent across the board for five. It really is dependent on the test. So make sure when you're kinda looking at your level counts here, we're looking at what the actual percent that they had to achieve on the test to be in that level would be. Um, 85 is the total number of students that took the regions. This purple box that's blank is because New York State has not shared us their data yet. So we do not know that, um, and I can populate that once they finally release it. We were hoping it would come out, it has not. Um, there is a horrible rumor that it might be January before we see regions comparison data. It was discussed at one of the last CIA meeting and I'm hoping it is not true. Um, so the rank, I have what it's out of because it's a little bit different. So for three through eight, it's all, we have 21 component districts and it's consistent. But we have, um, one of our districts, wine and skill does not test past eighth grade. We might have a, they might have an algebra or an earth science in there depending on, and advanced kids taking the test or something. But for the most part, they are out of it. So a lot of it, you'll see when it's out of 21, it will say out of 21. If it's out of 20, it'll say out of 20. One thing to recognize is this is the last year that this version of this test is being given. This current June twenty twenty six, it's a new next gen test. So that will be something we'll be looking at. And this will be the first administration of it. So it will be in early June that our kids will be sitting for that exam. Curriculum changed years back to prepare them because obviously we know that ELA is a four year test, really. It's based off of everything you've learned, really, from not even ninth grade on, but even prior to that. But. So this is the proficiency rate for passing. You'll see in orange mastery is in blue for the last ten years. And you'll see, like, again, we've changed, we went to Common Core, we went to, and that brought us to our five levels. So it has changed over the past years. The test has changed. So it's not my favorite chart, honestly, but it does give us some information.
I, I think I, I don't know that we need like a PowerPoint update, but I would love to see like.
I'll put together.
Mm hmm. Yeah, I can have, she'll get that from us and I'll send it to you guys. Over, overall, scores have done, scores on the ELA assessment did go down this year statewide.
Yes, we saw that when we're looking at multiple districts.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
That's what's hard about presenting this data without the state. And that's what Nicole and Andrew and I have been talking about. It drives you kind of mad. Because if we had that, we could just share it with you and it doesn't come out until January.
No, no, no.
This is all we got.
This is our numbers. This is just looking at us for passing over the last few years and us for mastery over the last few years.
We can't even tell you where the states are.
That's why Nicole keeps saying it's not her favorite. Because it, it gives you a sense of data where we are, but it, what is it really showing? Because the test is different.
But I do like your point of looking at like a differential between, and I'll put together a couple of charts and send that, have them send that to you guys. As just an updated information. All right, so this is our global. We had eighty four percent pass, twenty six percent achieve mastery. We're pretty much equal to where we're seeing for the RIC and the BOCs. Seventy four percent, or seventy four total students tested when we were ninth out of our twenty component districts. This is also a test that's broken out over the five different levels. But always proficiency is the main thing to keep in your, and mastery is always eighty five. Might have died. Rut row.
Someone in the public said they couldn't see the presentation, but others can see it, correct? Harris, is that correct?
You know, I, I'm here, look good.
Well, and and it's on board docs and you can download it and look at it.
Correct, yeah. It is on board docs for someone to look at it.
All right, so this is, I tried to put this in here. So you see these lines. It's because the test has changed three different times over the last ten years, right? We had our old test fifteen to eighteen, two thousand nineteen came out with the transition only test. So that's where for global, the global test was initially a ninth and tenth grade test and you took it at the end of your tenth grade year. Then they said, no, that we, the students were struggling with the global test. And so they changed it where it was just going to be based off of one year's worth of information. And so the transition test happened in two thousand and nineteen. And then we had COVID. And then when it was supposed to start, then we, so two thousand twenty two is when the new test came and that's the new framework. So that is kind of, the test hasn't changed over the last four years. So it's been pretty stable since then, but just kind of so you can see where the breaks are happening because there are new tests. U S history and government, we were eighty percent pass in that took the test, sixteen percent achieved mastery. We had eighty eight total students test and was fourteenth in the Questar Rankins. This is one where you see that level four is instead of a seventy nine, it's a seventy six and higher is seventy six to eighty four is a level four. So that's where we see some of these newer test ranges change depending on the type of the test. And this is another one where there's the new test, where we went to the new framework. That happened, so we had the COVID break, then it was supposed to come out and in two thousand twenty two. But because of a controversial question on the test, they scratched the whole test. And it was not given that year. So we have only seen it for the last three years. And that's, you can see our pass in rate for Chatham and our mastery rate. And again, it's, it's really difficult because we don't know what the states. But we know our RIC and we know we're pretty close to our RIC, which is a large, that's a, that's a large group. That's over like eleven thousand. So like, we're pretty close to where it is. You're not going to see the state be significantly higher when you're seeing the RIC and the BOC, the RIC especially being around the seventy nine percent. Algebra one. Do you have a question?
So.
Yeah.
Sorry. So we've been looking at all these RIC numbers rather than statewide numbers. Is that limitation in available data or is that, that's actually a better measure?
Well, we have no state data.
Yeah.
So right now, for total percent for Regents anyways. And so, but the RIC level tends to be fairly close to the state, but it's not, like, it's not included in our western part of the state and it's not included in our most southern part of the state. It's basically our region and north. So it's the, it's the capital region BOCs, Champaign Valley growth BOCs, Franklin, Essex, Hamilton BOCs, Washington, Saratoga, Warren. So there's, it's a hu, it is a large number.
It's our, it's our NERIC.
Right.
Our NERIC services us. They break it into, the state breaks school districts into your BOCs and then your NERIC region.
Yeah, I guess I'm curious if we were going to do comparisons, do we even want to look at statewide or is that the one we should be looking at?
You mean for this future data you want?
In general, I don't know. Like, how do you guys think about this?
I, I think.
Do you compare yourself to New York or you don't?
I, I think you'll see the NERIC and the state are quite similar.
Yeah. And they were for the three through eight proficiency when we looked at that, our, our RIC was very similar to where the state was.
It is very similar.
I think with, I'm sorry, with the new test, I like to see the state only because it's interestingly, how, how did that roll out? Was it geographical? Because sometimes, I mean, it's rare, but seeing that statewide is interesting. The other ones, probably the RIC is, in my opinion, is, is just as valuable, yeah. I just think those new tests, like especially the new five eight science, the new English, that, you know, science are all new. Just seeing how the state does is interesting.
So the Algebra one test changed in two thousand twenty four is when we saw the new test, meeting with our next gen standards. So you can kind of see our mastery rate from last year to this year went up overall. Geometry. So this is, we were fifty nine percent proficiency proficient and we saw seventy two, seventy three percent for the RIC. Mastery was nine percent. And we had fifty four total kids tested. So the geometry is an old test. If you see here, because it's only has the four, the four levels. So all our older tests are still on the old curriculum. Coming, it's still Common Core, so it's newer curriculum, but not the newest, right? So they haven't moved. That is another test that if I'm correct, that we are moving to a new test for this year. Actually, it was just, yeah, we just moved to it, right?
One administration.
All these new tests, they're still on bubble sheets or they?
Yeah, Regents are still.
Still pen and paper.
They haven't moved to online yet, which is interesting.
I just think when they spend five years to make a new test, you'd think that would be the moment.
Yep.
You would think.
None of the Regents are, our computer base, it's bizarre. And we, and they don't have a good answer for us. Superintendents, we ask them all the time, when are you going to do this?
Although the advantage of that is we have the data. Yeah.
All right, so Algebra two, we were ninety percent proficient this year, but so was our RIC and our BOCs, right? We were ninety one eighty eight, so we were right there with everyone else. Twenty percent mastery, we had thirty kids take the test. So you start to see the upper level mass, our number of kids taking the tests and who's enrolled in that class is obviously going down. We were twelve out of, even though we had ninety percent pass in, we were still, we were wound up in the middle of our pack, really, for the Questar Rankins.
And just to point out, just for some case, you know, they're new to this whole New York State thing, there is no option to opt out of, of the Regents. So you'll see, this is all students.
Not if you want to graduate.
Not if you want to graduate.
So those level ones, I, so I think fifty four is a failing grade, but so is fifty five. So the distinction there.
They allow, so there's for students with special.
Recover, right?
But students with disabilities can have a, a chance to basically have an appeal or a safety net in place so they can pass and graduate with that fifty five to sixty four.
In the, in the fifty five, sixty four range.
Yeah, yeah. And there, and there's other rules, our special appeal rules and stuff like that. But the main thing is the safety net that kind of there. So that's why I think they break it down. If you're below fifty four, you're really low and struggling. The fifty five, you're part, like, remember, like, the level twos were those partially proficient. So you're almost there, you're kind of there, but you're just shy of what they consider the pass in is sixty five. And so this is the ten year chart, but we are going to see, we have a brand new test June two thousand twenty six. So this come in June, Algebra two is taking a new, new test. So that's another one of those early, early administrations in June that we will see for Algebra two. And that will transition all of our math over. So Regents Earth Science, this is the last year we're seeing Earth Science. We were eleventh overall for the Questar Rankin, seventy two percent pass in, twenty one percent mastery, forty seven total kids tested. So. This is, they are, this year we're administering the Earth and Space Sciences. So like for the maths, they updated the curriculum, updated the test, really. But the curriculum stayed similar, just the standards kind of changed. They grouped them a little bit differently. There wasn't a complete makeover. Sciences are seeing a complete makeover and that started with our Science five and our Science eight and has now, it's transitioning forward into our Regents exams. So we are moving to Earth and Space Science this year. That is the curriculum being taught. It is a new course, new state course code. Everything is new about that, how it has to be reported. So we're going to see how we score on that this June as well.
Do people have to get recertified for that?
No, there's been a lot of pushover the last five years, professional development support from the state and others. Now, if you're certified in Earth Science, it's still good. But the, the next gen science standards are very different than like what Nicole said, that it, it really is. But it doesn't require a new certification.
So this is Regents Life Science and Biology. So that used to be what was our live in environment test. So that was, this is, this is, of course, has already switched over. Last year was the first year that it was administered. The test was, the new course was taught for Chatham. But it was optional. So like you could have switched over last year or you were, had to switch over this year. So Life Science is where Chatham movers in the region. But that being said, it's out of four. Because only four, but we were first and I would take that win. But for a new test, we were sixty nine percent pass in and we're right there with our RIC average, which is right around seventy percent. And our mastery was over RIC. We had seventy eight total kids take that test. It would be interesting. I mean, I'm looking forward to seeing what the state averages for the, for the districts. When I do the Questar Rankins, like some, some other schools tested, but they only had one kid test or two kids. And those would be your out of district placements possibly that were given the new curriculum. So this is out of who did the complete switch over and was this was their priority test. So we were first. So this is really a horrible, like, looking at it this way, you're totally new test, new course. It's not just new test, switch over. So it's a new course, it's new curriculum, it's new everything. So when you're looking at, okay, we dropped, but I don't know if we actually really dropped, you know? It's, it's a new, fresh start is how I look at it as this is our new point. Chemistry, ninety percent pass in. And this is something to celebrate because chemistry has been where we have struggled. And our pass in rate being at ninety percent, well over the RIC is, is huge. Twenty, with twenty nine kids taking the test and we were second out of our region. And this chemistry will be a new test next year. So not this June, but the following June, you will see chemistry switch over to the new curriculum for them as well.
I, I gotta say, that's stand out. And it's not the cohort, because when you look at the other science classes, it wasn't there last year.
Yeah, no, this is just to echo, celebration.
No, I think a lot of work was put into this one and really looking at our data over the last few years, where we needed some support and help and that they, you know, there was, there was a lot of work that went into that. So. True celebration there. So you can, you definitely see that jump here.
So with the new test coming up next year, that makes me happy that we got our science rooms done this year.
Lot of new, lot of new science tests in curriculum that is coming out, science and math. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, because guess what? Physics is new, too. Not this year, not this June, but the following June as well. So chemistry and physics will be switching over to new curriculum. So start in next school year, they will be teaching the new courses and curriculum for that. We had thirteen kids take the test. We were eighth out of our region for physics. And this is the mastery and pass in rate.
So Nicole is going to jump in again now that we're through nine through twelve and just say some things in the high school we're focusing on. So for the students who don't pass a Regents exam, MTSS, remember, still happens here in the high school, too. And we work with those students and try to, again, target what went wrong. Was it, was it content? Is it reading? Is it something with the test itself, ways to really look at every individual student and how, why they're struggling? So that's one thing we're using this data for. Another thing, Miles has, has embraced this, too, looking at quarter grades, midterm exams, are they predictive of this data? If you're midterms, everyone's passing hundred percent mastery. And then you look at this, that's not a good, you don't want to have that. So really looking at those comparisons and trying to find, again, that predictive data of how do we know in November how we're predicting our students will do in June? And we know how quickly time goes by. So being able to have that is something we're really focusing on. Some teachers have embraced new methodologies of teaching and are trying, and I think it's wonderful, trying new things, research based strategies. Again, the professional learning with that, sharing with each other. And much late grade five, I just say again, what happened with chemistry? We, we need to find that magic of what, what teacher did and what, how do we share that? How do we all learn about that? What strategy? So again, communication and sharing and, and really looking at, again, the numbers and how we did. So the data is very useful in, in guiding that work.
All right, this is my favorite part is diving into it a little bit more and getting into like what it truly means. So one of the things that we were, we were had in the past where we were able to get from our NERIC. reports from them, and they, there was three static reports that we were able to pull. And we would give the teachers, here's these three static reports. And by the time they got done just trying to even understand it, they got nowhere. And the data meeting, their time that they had to look at it was over. And so we never really got too far. So at Questar, we were started like really looking at that. And we created what we call the Reynolds Report. So this has taken those three static reports and puts them into one interactive report that the teachers can actually use at their fingertips. And they can sort the way they want to look at the data and view it. So way it's set up is it's, they're all in the Google files into sheets. And so we have correct by standard here. So if I'm looking at that, I have the type of question it was, whether it was a constructive response question or a multiple choice question, the domain that it fell into, so what's that subject area that it fell into, the strand, the standard, how many questions, what was the total points that they could have achieved? And what did they actually achieve? And their percent correct. And the way we sort it initially is we sort it by the lowest percent correct. So right from the very beginning, the standout is in red. If I scroll down, it goes all the way to green. But what the teachers can do is they can sort by any one of these pieces. Now, the way we have it set up is they can't, they can't mess it up. It's set where they have, they put on their own filter. They click to, that is my filter view, so then they can change it. So somebody else can be in the report and looking at it in their view at the same time. So this is the correct by standard, and then the next one is correct by question. So that looks like this. So this is, here's our question type, again, multiple choice, constructed response, the standard, the question number. If it's in blue, it's a released question. If it's in black, it's not a released question. How many total kids took the test is up here. So I'll know how many kids in my district took the test. And then what percent got it, for the building got it correct compared to the BOCs. And then we have, it's in red, if there's a big gap. So we can kind of quickly sort. If we want to see where we're, have the biggest gap is, we can sort and get our reds all together, right? If we want to sort by the standard, we can. What I like about this report is we have our answers. So this is what our kids picked for A, B, C, and D. And in blue is what the correct answer is. So what this helps us with, and when we just like look at it quickly, I can't read a single one of these numbers over here, so I'm not gonna, I don't know what it's saying. But if, for example, D said that it was thirty percent, and, but they also, another thirty percent chose C at the same time. But why was one answer correct, but the same percentage chose the wrong answer? I want to know a little bit more about that. Before I dive completely into that standard and say, okay, there has to be a problem here, I'm going to go to the question. So all you have to do is, if you scroll down, the question bank is list, is link is right there of all the released questions. The teacher can easily click to that question and be able to see, okay, what's up with this question? Because sometimes it might be a vocabulary piece that's missing or added, that they just, they never talked about this way with this vocabulary word that the state used this time. So maybe it's just like, okay, I'm going to add a new vocabulary and when I'm talking about it. It helps kind of try to drill down to where, where there could be an issue or, and, and it also celebrates our successes too, right? Things that we did well. Okay, well, I can see that you, this whole group is doing really well under this. And I spent more time on it this year than I did last year. I took that extra week and I re-taught it and did some reteaching, like things like that. So they can kind of figure out like, okay, this is what I did, this is what worked. Oh, maybe I'm going to try that with this other standard. So this report, this is what we're going to be diving into tomorrow with the teacher leaders. And we have like a, a nice little summary sheet that walks them through kind of of how to ask, what questions to ask when they're looking at it, to what the data could possibly be telling them. They are the experts into it. Like I can give them the data, but they are the true experts. They know what they taught, they know how they taught it, they know where they saw their kids struggling last year and where they didn't. So this kind of allows them to have a lot of flexibility at their fingertips. And then sometimes they'll come with more questions. Nicole, I need this, this, and this, can you try to get me this? And sometimes I can't. It's not something I have access to, and sometimes it is. One of the things that was asked last year was, well, we have the old test, can we compare and look? So one of the new things, and Terry doesn't even know about this yet, this is brand-new to this year. Added in the three through eight right now is I have another tab that's looking at twenty-twenty-fours, percent correct, and like where they were for the standards and twenty-fives for questions. And we can see this, these questions were asked in twenty-four and twenty-five, and they were in our lowest fifty percent. So it's just gives us a little more information. So it's like, oh, maybe I do want to look at this. And there was two questions last year on that and two more questions this year, you know? So that's something to kind of, it's just more information and more, so they can make more informed choices at their fingertips. So that's, that's where I'm excited, that there, where there we have an access to this.
Is that just for the three through eight?
This is for three through eight and for the Regents.
And one, here's two really quick examples. One, so we did this last year with all of the teachers. So this year, we're going to ask the teacher leaders to kind of head this with their team. But this year with you, I know at elementary level, we were doing this, looking at the questions, and we realized there was a gap in the instruction that, hey, we need to move this to earlier in the year because the test is going to happen, because this question keeps getting asked. Just one quick example. Another one was high school socialities, we were looking at a question. And so there was like a picture, it was a picture-based question, a graphic with the White House made it clear it was the nineteen twenties. And they asked like, what, what does this capture? And we had to look very closely, there were a bunch of women. And it was about suffragettes and, but unless you really looked at it closely, you, they were leading you to pick something on the Great Depression. Like the question, it was, you know, and those questions happened. But it was that moment of, we really need to teach, look at the whole picture. Read what's beneath the picture. You know what I mean? So it's just those little things that this data will, with those release questions, and then that can go on a midterm exam and that helps prepare. So it really does hit instruction as well. So just that real piece of the data driving the instruction too.
Are the, so I, I love this data-first approach. And it, it sounds like you've done a bit of wizardry there, slicing it up to make it consumable. But it's still really hard to consume. Are these, those New York IDs, are, do those correlate with Common Core or Next Gen? Or is that like a New York-specific ID?
Where are you looking?
Either on this page or the previous page, like column B?
Yes, that is, those are the actual standards. So you see a standard, it says New York for something dash. That is what the teachers have that their curriculum is based off of.
I, I'm, I'm curious if, if those are Next Gen or Common Core learning objective IDs.
Those are whatever the current test objective ID is. So if it's Common Core because it's an older test, it's going to be the Common Core. If it's.
But they're all national IDs.
They're.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, because it's New York.
So New York, there's no more Common Core. New York now has New York State standards, that's what they're calling them now. So they're not, not, Common Core is no longer.
But they didn't base their learning objectives on Next Gen?
So, so it started with New York, then it went to Common Core, now it's back to New York. And those are still based upon Common Core, but they tweaked them and made them personalize them for New York.
Yeah, that's really disappointing.
So, so they kind of went back. And that was due to feedback from the field.
Here we are in a situation where with, you know, with primary ed, we've got iReady that's looking at this exact same data and personalizing the lesson plans for the teachers. And we will not find a software company in the world that wants to write that software for New York. So i, is there really no way to relate these back to something that could go into like software that teachers can use on a daily basis, like or a weekly basis? Because I could see them sticking their heads in this, finding two or three questions that, wow, I really got to do better at those, and then having enough of the numbers and not wanting to spend like hours a week in spreadsheet to figure out their lesson plan for the next week.
Yeah, I don't think it relates for weekly instruction. It's more about like overall.
But it could, and iReady has succeeded there. And that's why I'm asking about the ID numbers, because.
Yeah, I know, they're specific state or not.
So that would be a whole nother.
And, and the reason is, is because there was so much negativity on Common Core back when it was rolled out. So they had to change it and they changed it back to here.
When they renamed it, but.
Yeah, yeah. But a lot of the Common Core still lives in the, in these new New York State standards, but they did tweak them. So they, these are specific state. And there are some companies that personalize for New York State, but it's definitely harder, harder to do that.
Well, if you guys hear about something amazing there, I'd be in full support of that resourcing. But it's hard when New York wants to go it alone. No, this is, this is amazing. This is amazing at them finding the like few questions that like really need that attention, but it can't drive lesson plans.
And a lot of this, and a lot of this is new. Like I said, they made a lot of changes. The state did not offer this stuff to us before. As many release questions, that was feedback that they got from the field, again, to make these more purposeful. And we're very thankful to Questar for making even more user-friendly, because this is very hard to navigate. But it's, let me tell you, as somebody who's been looking at data for, for over twenty years, this is a whole lot easier to understand than I've ever seen it before. So kudos to Questar for putting it together for us. And the big thing is we have to teach the teachers how to use it. And that's what they're doing tomorrow. And they have a guide, and the teachers will know how to use this, and they'll have a guide to be able to navigate it. And that's part of the professional development.
The teachers did use it last year, and the feedback was, was positive. And we're going to keep trying to tweak it. I think it also, it's, you have to like think about it as the domain. Like so when you're teaching your measurement and data curriculum, right? You can kind of link the, the use to, the standard to what your curriculum is. You know what it is. So yes, a computer program is not going to do it for us, unfortunately, at this point in time. But that's why, that's why we can never just go to a computer program and we need the teacher, because the teacher does have valuable insight to this. And they know what they're teaching, and they know that standard that they might be working on and the time. And that, that was one of the biggest things. I ran out of time and I never even taught it. I thought it wasn't going to be a major part of the test, and it turned out it was. Two questions were asked of it. And you say that's not major, but in a test like this too is significant. So it's information, it's not the best, but it's the best, it's what we have. And hopefully we can find some helpful use out of it.
And you know, when you go back and look through the whole thing, I'll, I'll end with where I started, which is there is some really great info in here to celebrate. And there's areas where we need to grow. And I probably just described every public school in the state, right? So, and we're, and I, I hope with what I shared too, that we are working on that, both sides. We, you know, you mentioned Scott Selt, so we're going to make our fastball faster. Where we're good, we want to make, get even better, right? And where we need to close those gaps, we are definitely trying very hard to do that. So, and I just want to thank Nicole too, because this, that, that report that our teachers have, Andrew's a hundred percent right. Like I, as a teacher, I never had anything like that. And I thought, oh my gosh, but they created that, it's so user-friendly.
There's always that one teacher that's been figuring this out every year.
Yeah.
On their own, and they spent however many hours doing it. But probably only like one, or a couple.
Yep.
I think it'd be super helpful as a teacher though, to know like where you, what lessons were successful generally and what weren't. Like to be actually kind of graded in that granular of detail, I could just see. For lesson planning sake, just the general thrust of it could be super useful to teachers.
I think Chatham has to be complimented for the urgency with which we're tackling some of these things. You know, it's not just we have to do it next year, we're going to do it here. It's an urgency that's felt within the district, and I think that's very positive.
And like the, the biology exam being an example of that, we embraced that, we took on that challenge. And maybe out of four, but we finished first. So that, and I'm going to keep saying that, because I'm really proud of, of what we accomplished there, so.
Big thank you to Nicole, thank you Nicole.
Thank you very much, thank you, that was great.
Dawn, before we go any further, do you mind if we let our student present so she can go home before we go to anything else?
That's a great idea.
Thank you for your patience, Jaden.
Yeah, no problem. Well, I was going to talk about Shakespeare, but Mr. Court kind of stole that, but that's okay. So yeah, they are opening for the festival. I was also going to mention the Middle School Musical. But yeah, they're doing the Dear Edna Junior. And the High School Musical was announced yesterday as The Little Mermaid. So definitely the seniors are very excited for, for those roles. And this weekend, the high school has thirteen students going to Area Allstate, and two of which are string students, which hasn't happened since like ten years ago. So that's definitely an accomplishment for our orchestra teacher. So we covered that. For sports, this past weekend, we had two cross-country winners placed in the States meet over, last weekend. And yesterday was the start of the winter sport tryouts. Some events that are going on in the school is that the first quarter has ended, and the report cards are online and available. The seniors took their panoramic picture of the twenty-twenty-six, or the twenty-six, like standing on the hill, which was fun. And this, actually yesterday, I don't know what date it is today. The business law class took a field trip to the sheriff's office and dispatch center in Hudson. And we also have some donation events coming up for Thanksgiving, like Operation Adopt a Soldier, where students could bring in items and holiday cards and games. And we'll send them to the soldiers' out, wherever. And the Unity Club is also collecting items to donate food for the, or, let me start over. The Unity Club is also collecting Thanksgiving items to donate to the Silent Food Pantry in Chatham. And we are also collecting prom dresses for the prom dress drive for this upcoming season. And this Thursday, the seniors have their mock interviews coming up. And while we are doing that, the rest of the classes are going to be seeing the U Albany's cybersecurity event in the auditorium. So hasn't really much been going on, but you know, our music department has definitely been busy this past couple of weeks.
Thank you, Jaden, that's great. You can go home if you'd like, go get some rest. Thank you for being patient. Bye, Annie. Mike, do you want to give your facilities update or?
What?
Finance, operations?
Operations.
Operations.
Quick, quick update. Okay, so the, just on the mock interviews, it's one of my favorite events this Thursday. And I was very impressed, the two students sent me cover letters and resumes, I thought very well done. And I think that's wonderful that we do that for our students and prepare them. The taxes, they're on here, it's done. So I called Andrew at about ten o'clock last Wednesday night, and it took a long time to balance. So I was so happy we balanced, and I thank Lauren for all those hours and time she helped and assisted with getting it done, and the county accepted them, and they're, they're balanced. So it was a tremendous amount of work, and I thank the business office, specifically Lauren, for helping out. Budget calendar, so we met with finance, we planned out our calendar like we do every year. How we're going to meet, and the reserve plan, I'll, I'll present that at the December meeting. And then we really get in January, February, March, you know, then we really get into budget. So we have a good group, I'm looking forward to it. And I think that's all I have for tonight, so you'll hear enough of me next week, or yeah, next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just, this way we can go through consensus quicker? The change orders.
Yep.
Is that the lighting in the front here that you changed?
That's a lot of it, yeah. That costs some money, but we needed to, because remember, when they found out those weren't working, and it was going to cost us a lot. So that's the change orders. And then we also have the seeker for the hundred thousand dollar project, the public approved last May, that's on there.
That's because of the remediation we had to do, right?
The bus garage, we're going to switch the tank, so the, there's a heating oil that's a large tank.
Oh, rotating, yeah.
So that's good, so we can start doing that in the spring, so that, those are the two items on there.
Thanks.
The, the lights were the biggest change order that we've done. And it was, we found it as a necessity. That was really pretty much the only large item that we changed on the project.
No, I, I had a problem before. It looks safe out there now at night, so yeah.
Okay, move on to our committee reports. Okay.
I don't know if we had all these.
Well, actually, I was going to.
Quick updates.
So Policy Committee, I ended up canceling it because we based all of our meetings on when we usually get updates from NISBA updating policies. And we usually get one by now, by the end of September, early October, and apparently there's nothing going on. So they didn't give us an update, so there really wasn't any reason to have the meeting. We have a couple of like minor things that are not press, you know, really pressing. So we're just waiting for them for their update. So until that, we're just not going to waste anybody's time. So I'll let you know, you can schedule.
We, we did meet in facilities, talking about, those guys are marching through their. Those guys are marching through their um, the last items that were left over in the project. No major. Issues left really. And we started talking about the um, the youth study. And the building condition study and uh we're our condition study is not actually due till the end of the calendar year. Um, but we pulled it up to quarter one. Um, and they think they can get it done or or the at least the field work they can get done. Um, which is really what we need so that we can have some feedback for the rest of the year. So that's going to be, we're going to get that done early. And then uh the air conditioning in the elementary school, we talked about that. It hasn't been talked about in about six months. Um, there's some question of whether we'll actually have AC in place um. By the end of this school year, but it we might. There's some remaining questions about electrical. So. We're going to figure it out. If if electrical is easy, we'll probably get it done this year. If not, then the following year.
Um, finance committee, you already gave a overview. And then audit committee, did you have? I know it. Okay. Jaden just went. So motion to approve. Had a.
We usually say seeker.
Seeker?
Yeah.
Do I have to read this entire thing?
Uh. No, no, just the first sentence is really all we need.
Because we'll be here all night. Okay, um. R thirty four, whereas the Board of Education of the Chatham Central School District is considering to undertake a project involving upgrades and renovation. To the existing fuel tanks located at the district's bus garage, including the installation of new supply and return lines. The project. Um.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion?
Motion?
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So. And. Consensus agenda. R thirty five, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda K through M as written. Never motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, we don't have any items for future. Oh, we do. Okay, so for December ninth. Um, we'll have special education update, capstone presentation. And adopt the final reserve plan.
And we're going to appoint a board member.
And yeah, most exciting will be appointing a new board member.
Uh, you know, there were some notes that came up during that academic review. Um, so. I I'm sure Terry, you got them, but um. Uh. I'm really excited to hear about. Uh, there's a few standout classes. So. Sometimes you can't repeat magic. Um, but if there's something systemic to repeat, I'd love to hear about it.
Okay. I don't know about the actual next four names.
No, no. But sometime in the future.
Yes, yep, yep.
Okay. Um. Okay, the second public comment, if anyone wants to speak.
Dave wrote his name.
Okay.
Man, you covered a lot of information tonight. Uh, my name's Dave O'Connor, community member. Um. Given the review of the enrollment study, I wanted to just draw your attention or or point out uh three different pages with some information. So the first one is page one uh that deals with the commissioner's regulations, section one fifty five. One. So I went and looked at that and it really plays up the responsibility of the board and the district administration to. Ensure that the facilities that the district is maintaining is appropriate to the enrollment. So this report was very, very important and its data is very important. Um, if we went to page fourteen. And uh the doctor addressed this where he was bringing up the information only runs through twenty twenty three. But uh, there's an item on median value of ownership occupied units. So I'm just going to talk to not Chatham, but talk to Columbia County. The Columbia paper cited a reference uh in the last three months in a workforce article. Um, that brought up. The median home in Columbia County in twenty nineteen was two hundred and forty six thousand dollars. Twenty twenty five, so not twenty twenty three, but twenty twenty five. The median is four hundred ninety five thousand. That's a one hundred and one percent increase. So we have a significant. Affordability issue in the county and in the towns. And if you look at what the village has in its comprehensive plan, and I know the town of Ghent. It is not a robust building plan to bring in. New homeowners. The homeowners are coming here, are selling their places in Westchester, the city and Jersey. And buying the seven hundred and fifty one million, one and a quarter places. Because what they sold down there was for two, two and a half million. Um, and the one other thing I want to bring up, and I encountered this a lot during my uh canvassing uh for the election in November. Same thing on page fourteen. Uh, the all households with one or more members, sixty five or older, forty four percent. There was a lot of talk on the doorsteps about taxes and how high they are in particular. School taxes. So I know that the district has a lot of plans for outreach about uh homeschooling, private schooling, et cetera. We've got to win back the non grew up in Chatham. Older group that's retiring here because a lot of them are ticked off about taxes. So then the last thing, and this goes to the facilities and the two buildings versus three, and that's page twenty six. Which shows the historic and then the projected. So if we look out to twenty thirty four, the projection is somewhere around. Seven hundred and seventy five students. So when we did our. Questar facility study in twenty twelve. Um, the number we were talking about was twelve hundred and sixty two students. This is now saying seven hundred and seventy five. So we really do need to get moving on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. So we have a motion to go into executive session. Um, be it resolved that the Board of Education will enter executive session to discuss collective negotiations. The medical, financial, credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation. Or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demoralization, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation.
Motion.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Oh, appoint a district pro temp? Um, can you get it? Okay, thank you.
I motioned to appoint Andrew.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll second that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed?
Yes, Andrew Court. Um, and we don't anticipate returning to open session.
I'm sure. And we do not anticipate returning to open session.
Mr. Court wouldn't mind you doing that.
Okay. And if all the board members could just meet Deb for a quick signature.